Things now in session, I'll be giving the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Our heavenly Father, bless this council as it does the work of the citizens of York County, also during these decisive, divisive times, guide the state and national elected officials to make the right decisions for our country at this important time. In your name, amen.
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 Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is oath of office. Mike Drummond, Mike, there you are. And have you, Emily swear you in? Were you prepared, Emily?
Actually, I'm not.
Just fake it somehow.
Okay, thank you.
Need me to do it?
Chad remembered. He said it.
I just saw him swear. That I am duly qualified to perform the duties of office which I've been appointed and I will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Serve, protect, defend. The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Great job. Oh, it is.
Emily.
Appreciate it. Good to see you again.
Thank you, sir.
Excellent job on the, on the cup.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, put the bill out there a little bit. Put the bill out.
Yeah, that's a good job, Jeff. We have one person that signed up for appearances, Elaine Goff. Oh, yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and county council members. My name is Ellen Goff and I'm a York County representative on the Lake Wiley Marine Commission. I'm joined here tonight by our second York County representative on the Marine Commission, Commissioner Debbie Chicharren, and also our chairman of the Marine Commission, Neil Brennan. The third representative of York County on the commission, Commissioner Blanche Bryant, is ill tonight, otherwise she would be here as well. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight to share with you a little bit about the Lake Wiley Marine Commission, its responsibilities, the programs and the accomplishments that we've achieved throughout the last year. To take you through the briefing book that I believe you've all received will be Chairman Brennan.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you all.
Yes, sir.
A little while ago, the-
If you would give your address for the clerk.
Oh.
Oh, you got it?
Right. The, a little while ago, the Mecklenburg County Commissioner suggested that the commissions under their auspices give an annual report. So, we did. And we kind of thought that was a good idea, that we might ought to share that information with the other three counties that support Lake Wiley Marine Commission, and I appreciate the opportunity to brief you all tonight. First, I want to thank you, because not without your support and that of the other counties, we couldn't do what we do. We couldn't carry out our, our mission. And the support that you provide us is essential in making sure we get our job done. This is our mission statement, and it basically says we're going to support the policies and do right by the river, the lake, as some call it. So, how do we do that? That's kind of a, you know, mission statements are kind of highfalutin', but let's, let's, how do we actually do what this thing says? I've provided you all with a little book that'll get into some of the detail that I don't think we need to go into in the overview here, but if you have any follow-up questions, please call me or any of your commissioners at any time, and I'll be happy to fill you in. If I don't do a satisfactory jobs of explaining things tonight here for you. One of our big things is safety, and recently, we provided all the law enforcement officers on the lake life jackets to carry with them on their patrol boats, so that if they come upon somebody who is without, they can provide them, rather than writing them a ticket or having them escorted off the lake until they go buy one and interrupt their day. Discretion of the officer, of course. Buoys, in North Carolina, we have the option, in accordance with the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission, to go put buoys back where they belong if they get carried away by the tide or the rip or whatever. No tide wouldn't be the rip coming from the dams. I grew up on a river in Maryland, so forgive me. But at any rate, in South Carolina, we contact immediately York County Sheriff's Department, and they go take care of that for us in South Carolina. We also are concerned about some of the safety issues that impact everyday citizens, electrocution dangers. You'll see in your booklet there, one of these things here that talks about electrocution. One of our commissioners from York County last year raised this issue, and we thought it was so important that not only did we have one of these posters made to display at Cabela's, but also at the West Marine over in, across the bridge there in Mecklenburg County. We also have a pretty extensive mailing list generated from our River Sweep evolution over the years, and we've emailed copies of this, and also the next one in your book, which has to do with carbon monoxide dangers to everyone on that mailing list. Carbon monoxide can build up in the stern of a boat, and recently, there's been a big push on these young fellows, not me, but a lot of the young fellows that want to go, what do you call it, surfing behind the boat. You can ballast down your boat so that you get a bigger wake, and oftentimes, that surfer is right there at the stern, and you have other people sitting on the stern watching. Build up carbon monoxide there, and people can pass out and fall in the water. It is a real danger, and we try to highlight those safety things and promulgate them to as many people as we possibly can. The other thing we do is a little thing called Splash, and that's a little mock-up tugboat that's motor-operated. We send it out to the elementary schools when they ask, and how a former commissioner and former safety officer who operates the thing, and the little eyes flash, and there's, he can talk through it, and the kids are just enthralled by the thing. We run it at the boat show every year, and as I say, any elementary school that wants to have it come, he's got a little smoke stack, and there's little stickers there, and their kids are invited to go up and get them. Again, to emphasize safety. As far as the environment is concerned, that's another one of our concerns, as you see. Water quality, we've been monitoring the water quality since the program was initiated in 1987. So, we have records going back, monitoring the water. Mecklenburg Land Use Services does most of it, but recently, the DHEC has gotten involved. They've got a website now where you can go onboard, and they just generated this last January, where we can see the samples they take. And also, Windjammer and Ebenezer Park, if you look in your pubs there, we've got the recent samples that they take. We're looking at E. coli and things like that. If there's a problem, we get the word out as best as we can, in addition to the health services, services people. We have a clean marina program. We go to the marinas in South Carolina and inspect them for their, the way they handle their fuel, the way they handle their pump-out stations, any safety programs that they have, any spill procedures that they may have in case there is a spill of fuel, and the storm drain, and so on and so forth. Now, there is a program in South Carolina, it's voluntary, but it costs the owner to participate, and he also has to send his representative to a day's worth of training. Nobody's involved in that program in South Carolina. So, years ago, we instituted a program based on the one that North Carolina had on the shore, because North Carolina didn't have very good one either inland. We've been running that for about nine years. So, we go pick up the slack for those that don't care to participate in the state program. It's been pretty successful so far. The other thing we do is we institute sterile carp into the river, and that's to eat down the hydrola, which can be a hazard to navigation, if you get big clumps of that stuff out there and you run over it in your boat, it's kind of a problem. Couple of years ago, we had 200 fish introduced, last year, 90, this year, none. I'm always a little worried when people shut off the valve altogether instead of, we'll see how that works out, because next year, I got a feeling we might be back up in the hundreds, but we'll see. That program apparently has been effective, and that's in cooperation with the Duke folks, who, we share half of the bill for that. The other thing we've done recently is we've instituted a program to, to study this sedimentation problem. We kind of see sedimentation as a cancer on the river. And unfortunately, we've had a couple of real bad blowouts here recently. Cypress Creek is the most recent one, over on Bonham Road, where Commissioner Goff lives. According to Sam Perkins, that's the worst one of the Catawba Riverkeeper Foundation, the worst one he's ever seen. What we have done is institute a study to see what we can do to share information with the public about what they can do on their own property. Those blowouts were caused by construction companies. So was the Browns Cove one a few years ago. So was the Mattamy Holmes one over there on Torrance Creek, which occurred in North Carolina, but went into South Carolina waters. So, it's not a matter of those big construction companies, if they're going to have another one, it's just a matter of when. I had a discussion today with a gent from Mecklenburg County who oversaw that Mattamy Holmes thing, and apparently, they were fined $68,000 for that, for that blowout. I guess the results of the one here on Cypress Creek are still pending, but my thought is that, you know, that fine isn't very much, when you stop and think about these construction companies. That's less than a quarter of a lot, if they wanted to sell a lot. So, my thought is, we ought to maybe think about ways that we can encourage these folks to shore up their practices. And even if the minimum, someone once said, if the minimum weren't the minimum, you know, it wouldn't be the minimum, if the minimum requirements, you know, it's minimum. Sometimes we get the feeling that's, construction companies do the minimum, and then figure that, well, if we have a blowout or something like that, we'll just pay the fine, rather than put in place corrective actions that prevent recurrence, which is the key. I suggested to Mr. Wilson over in their Mecklenburg County, that whatever findings they had, they might want to share them, not only with other government agencies, but also with other construction companies, so that they don't have the same problem. The research program that we did was, again, we hired a, a young graduate student from UNCC Charlotte, who studied over the last couple of months, the kind of plant growth that could be used to shore up the shoreline, stabilize it, to perhaps prevent some of the runoff. And we're going to share that, and there's also a resume of her findings in your notebook there. We're going to share that with our vast number of people who have, on our, on our mailing The support of law enforcement, I've already alluded to, with the, with the life jacket program. We also, there was a bill in North Carolina about doing away the riparian buffer. We weighed in on that. Apparently, it passed the Senate, but fortunately, it didn't pass the House. Repairing buffer, we feel is a, is a good impediment to this pollution issue, sedimentation runoff. We support the law enforcement agencies in other ways. Recently, thank you all for taking over the insurance and maintenance of the York County Southern Law Center. We've been doing that for about nine years, and now that enables us to, enables us to use our monies to help some of the other law enforcement agencies. One way, we bought, purchased dive equipment, which is readily available now on the lake in case any of the law enforcement agencies need dive equipment in a hurry. So, it's on, on scene, ready to be used, and that was from Mecklenburg County. In Gaston County, recently, we provided some repair parts for their sonar, for their police boat. And we're also actively pursuing a boathouse for Gaston County. They're the only ones that don't have a place to keep their police boat. They have to trailer it, so we're, we're trying to help them in that regard. Getting back to the pollution area, the sedimentation, I've already spoken to, the debris dumping, a couple of years ago, there were some good old boys that said, hey, if I clear this lot, I'd really like not to have haul those logs off. I'd like to just dump them in a deep part of the lake, if you're all right with you. And some other good old boy at Duke said, that'd be just fine, if you can believe that. And that went on for several years, until somebody saw this barge going down the lake and dumping these things in the river. So, we kind of got involved in that. We didn't think that was a good idea. Went to Duke and suggested we were going to write a letter, they said, no, 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 we'll take care of it, thank you very much. So, they weighed in and put a stop to it. We also tracked the Tegucay Sewer System, which was a real problem for the folks over there. Every time it rained, the thing filled up, because it was all full of roots. It was the water going in that was filling it up and causing it to overflow from the rains. They had an SSO, as sanitary sewer overflow, every couple of months, and they had a couple of real bad ones, and were on the hook with the state. But they finally got that squared away, and we tracked that and had reports monthly on how they were, quarterly on how they were doing there. And when the Allen Steam Plant was tasked to make sure they didn't have a Dan River example, we tracked that as well. And the Mecklenburg County Water Sample folks were over there checking that out to make sure that there was nothing of the bad contaminants going in to the river.
They didn't have a Dan River sample?
Beg your pardon?
They didn't have a Dan River sample?
(laughing) I was a Dan River, I'm sorry.
Dan River.
Dan River, I beg your pardon. Yeah, that's it. I'm beg your pardon. I must have slurred my words there. I apologize.
I probably heard you wrong.
Yeah, that's it. There you go. So, those are the kind of things that we do. We also have a, a pretty good website going now. We revamped that, thanks to Commissioner Goff and her artistic capabilities. It's a pretty neat little website. Hope you all get a chance to check it out. We do have some media contacts, Channel Three, Mr. Paul Cameron is one of our spokespersons. He'll speak up for us if we ask him to on certain important things. We do have a public service announcement, we're members of a couple of chambers of commerce, Lake Wiley Chamber of Commerce and the Mecklenburg Mount Cross Area Chamber of Commerce, where we make a lot of contacts and tell people when they ask, well, what's this Lake Wiley Commission all about? Well, we kind of tell them what it's about. Public outreach, I briefed the Lake Wiley Rotary Club, and for those of you who know the group over in River Hills Estates, the Smoozers, had a good chat with them a while back. Another big thing we have coming up to help our environment is River Sweep. It's a month from today. We get around 600 to 800 people to come out and give us a hand cleaning up the shoreline. We only get about 40 or 50 boats, so we really need some more boats to carry these people to the shoreline. We provide tarps for the boats and grabbers and bottled water, gloves, bags, all kinds of stuff, and we get a lot of help from businesses and support, donations of those materials and monetary donations as well. So, that kind of in a nutshell, is some of the things we've been doing, and again, we appreciate your support so that we can continue to do that. I'd like to entertain any questions you might have about anything I've said.
Any questions? Mr. Roddy.
I'll just make a quick comment. First of all, thank, thank the Lake Wiley Commission for its work it's doing on, on the lake and protecting our most valuable resource. And I just had a question, what is the overall water quality of Lake Wiley compared to some of the others in the area that you-
Well, I don't know the answer to that, but I will find out for you, sir. There's, on the back of that one sheet, it talks about certain parameters that, that explain some of those findings there, or some of the data that's there. We, of course, are on a chain of lakes here, so a lot of what we get is going to come from Lake Norman and on down, flows downstream, as they say. A lot of our trash that we pick up comes from there, too, when they open the dam. But I will take that question and get back to you, and see what the comparisons are between not just on the Catawba River, but also in some of the other lakes in the, in the state, and see if I can find a good answer for you. I don't have one right now.
And we've heard several, several concerns about, you know, developers and building contaminating the lake. I was just going to see and have some discussion with, with council later about, can we reiterate those concerns once builders and developers are coming in, getting permits that build in the areas that could possibly contaminate? Maybe we need some reinforcement or reassurance from them that they're going to do their most part to, to try to keep contamination out. Because, like you say, just, some of them will, will just bear the burden of just the fine and go on and do what they're going to do. I'd much rather them not contaminate it and keep their money, help us protect it. So, I, I think if we can, you know, have some conversations around that, reiterate the importance of them.
I understand, maybe some of those conversations are going on here in York County, and I appreciate that concern. I agree. I, I think that perhaps a, a large fine from the get-go, and then, you know, again, it ought to be, what can we do to keep stuff from going in the lake, as opposed to, what am I going to get fined if I do?
Exactly.
And I think if we, and, and I shared with Mr. Wilson, one of the, I used to work in the nuclear power industry when I, in my second career, and one of the things that they have there is called operation experience, and they share, if something goes wrong at a nuclear power site with some piece of equipment that other companies have, that information is shared with them. So, I suggested to Mr. Wilson that whatever they found out over here at the Torrance Creek problem, the Mattamy Holmes problem, whatever the corrective actions were, and he said they drilled it down pretty well, and knew exactly what happened, why it failed, and what they didn't do right, and what corrective actions need to be taken in the future. That needs to be shared with other, other groups, not just governments, but other construction companies who are going to be doing these major things. It's just, it's just a, a service that could be provided to these other folks that are running the same situation, or at least they know how not to do it. But that's, I welcome your thoughts on that, and I will get back to you on your, on how we're doing compared to the other lakes, sir. I don't, I don't know, and I'll find out.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Love.
So, your timing's great, and thank you for your presentation, but council's been working on a stormwater ordinance. Staff and management have been working on a stormwater ordinance now for quite some time. We're going to have a workshop in probably the next 60 days, I think. I'm not sure exactly when that's scheduled, but, so, would love for you to attend that as a group, and one of the things that I think was interesting that you mentioned was the plantings and things that, maybe there's some things that you have access to, some information like that, that the county staff didn't know or doesn't know, and we could incorporate some of those things into some of the development and things that's on, on the shore of the lake. Maybe, you know, they have to have buffers, too, and maybe there's, maybe there's some, some information in that that would let us know what is needed along those shorelines.
Be happy to share with you whatever information we have from that report. The young lady did a very good job, and she was under the auspices of Dr. Sarah-
Collins?
Who is one of the instructors over there. And you just have a thumbnail there of, of the findings on that one sheet in there, but we'll be happy to, I'll get back with you, Ms. Love, to, to share with you any of the details. And welcome the opportunity to participate in your workshop. Thank you.
I'll pass that along.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, very much. Yes, sir. Next is public forum, where you have up to two minutes to speak your mind about any concerns. Paul, let you come forward first. Only one other person signed up. Anthony, is that Becker?
Yes, sir.
You can just wait till the public hearing, that way you're not restricted to two minutes.
Okay.
With Paul.
Paul Boger. I live at 880 Kingsbury Road, Clover, South Carolina. I'm currently serving as interim executive director for the Greater York Chamber of Commerce. I'm here today to actually thank you for the support for Summerfest. Summerfest 2018 was held on August the 25th, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. We had excellent weather, I might say, which is unusual for Summerfest. The opening ceremonies was held at 10:00 o'clock in front of the courthouse, and I want to thank the council for voting to restore and renovate that building to its original service. I also want to thank Councilwoman Williams and Winkler for attending our opening ceremonies. In order to help the rest of the council understand Summerfest, Summerfest 2019, 2019 will be held on August the 24th. We'll have opening ceremonies at 10:00 a.m. in front of the courthouse, and we very much would like to have all of the council members to participate to that event. Greater York Chamber of Commerce really appreciates the support we get from the council for Summerfest, the largest one-day festival in the state of South Carolina. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion for a consent agenda?
Move, approve, consecutive.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. First order of business, public hearing. Council to hold a public hearing and an approved third reading of ordinance authorizing the execution delivery of a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes and incentive agreement bond between York County, South Carolina, and Performance Friction Corporation, including its affiliated and related entities formerly identified by the county as Project DB with respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes, including the provision of certain infrastructure credits, the inclusion of certain property in the county and a multi-county industrial or business park, or other matters related thereto. Anybody here want to speak against? You caught me off guard there, I wasn't expecting that. Anybody want to speak in favor? Yes, sir.
My name is Tom Davis. I'm the executive vice president treasurer for Performance Friction Corporation.
And if you would give your address.
I'm sorry?
If you would give your address, too.
Yes. 83 Carbon Metallic Highway in Clover. Performance Friction is a manufacturer of disc brake components for automobiles, trucks, off-road vehicles, race cars. We sell our components worldwide, primarily, I mean, we make disc brake pads, calipers, and rotors. We have been evaluating our options between our current operations in Clover, South Carolina, and some additional operations we have in Gastonia, North Carolina. And the incentives being offered by York County have been, have been key in our decision-making process for expanding in York County. We are looking at adding roughly $7.9 million over the next five years in building and equipment, and roughly 100 to 110 new jobs. This equipment and building is necessary for us to modernize our manufacturing operations to continue to compete on a global basis with the competitors that we currently compete with. And we are excited about locating this project in Clover, South Carolina, and we appreciate council's willingness to support us in our efforts.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Appreciate the job you bring. Anybody else in favor?
Move, close.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Have a new motion?
Move, approve.
Second.
This is the third reading. Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, hold public hearing, case number 1816. Major amendment to the Brayden Plan Development at 804 Brayden Parkway in the Fort Mill Community. Yes, sir.
Karen, could you queue up that presentation for the applicant?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Steve Allen, planning staff, provide the overview of the application this evening. The application before you is a major amendment to a plan development. The Brayden Plan Development Tax ID 652-0000114, located at Brayden Parkway and SC 160. This is a planned development that has been amended on a couple of occasions. This is just the latest version, and before you, in your packet, you should have the information regarding the proposed changes, the applicants proposing to change several of the proposed uses in the plan development to, to include, but not limited to, gas stations, car washes, automobile service, businesses that provide title check cashing loan services, mini warehouse storage, RV storage, auto sales, and then are adding to that list multifamily, RV parks, flea markets, heavy machinery sales and truck operations. The applicant was pursuing additional uses to add on to the existing PD that were not covered under the original approval. This is a six-acre tract that is remaining from the remainder, from the rest of the PD. The, the current PD contains roughly 220 single-family units and about 300 or so multifamily units. Plan developments are required to have a mix of residential and non-residential uses. This is the non-residential portion of the plan development.
Any questions?
And those are the only proposals. And those are the only proposed changes to the PD at this time.
Any questions? Ms. Cox?
Can you just run through what is currently allowed by right in the PD?
Everything else in the BD three district, other than the uses that I mentioned, is permitted, which is a wide range of retail, um...
Is that what you just listed off and read?
That was the prohibited uses.
Okay.
The uses I just read were all the prohibited uses.
The prohibited ones?
The prohibited ones. Yeah, we, we focused on, on the, uh, non-auto uses.
Any other? Yes, sir. Mr. Roddy?
Question. I've, I've been getting a lot of, a lot of emails and hearing from a lot of people over in Fort Mill about, about this, um, about this piece of property. So, were, it, they're, they're saying that this piece of property wasn't supposed to be used for this type of, uh, I guess, the use that's being asked for now. Was this something that was supposed to come back later to be determined to use this property for? What's something that, it's kinda in the cards a little bit before they purchase their home behind the neighbors?
Commercial use was going to occur there. The question is the type of commercial uses, and the applicant will explain further when they come up their intent behind that, but in order to achieve those uses, they had to amend the PD. And, uh, under section one-fifty-five-two-fifteen, um, be, you know, changing use requires a major amendment, and a major amendment requires a rezoning process.
So, there was never intended for this property to be residential going forward? It was always known some kind of commercial was going?
Correct. Initially, the applicant wanted to do, uh, more multifamily, but in order to do that, that would violate not only the PD ordinance, which requires a mix of non-residential uses, but also the state statute, which also requires a mix of non-residential uses.
That's what I needed.
But we, uh, that language was more later, and we just cleaned that up. That needed to come out on the last amendment, and it should, and we just took care of it in this one.
Anybody else on council? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, so we'll carry on with the public hearing. Anybody wants to speak against?
Like, against me?
Uh, yep. Full straws.
Okay. I do have a few questions.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if we'd be allowed to revisit another?
No, we're, we just listen to you. We don't respond back.
Uh, okay. Um, well, do you have to need my name or any other information?
Right. Name and address for Karen.
So, my name is Thomas Rab. I, um, I live at two-sixty-one Hilton Lane, uh, in Fort Mill, South Carolina. Um, first, I just wanna say thank you guys for all listening to us today. Um, I know there's a...
Absolutely.
A lot of us here from, from, uh, the Fort Mill slash Brayden Development, um, and we do have a lot of concerns. Um, one of the things, when we all bought into the neighborhood, we had been under the impression that there would never, ever be a fast-food del- um, type establishment put to rest on this property, and that was a huge, um, reason that we actually had made it a large investment in purchasing in this, in this location. Um, I don't know where all of you live, or what types of homes you have, or what type of cars you might own, but if you could think about it this way, like, I was buying my Porsche, and I wanted to live in a neighborhood that had its Porsche, and I felt like, when I heard about this proposed Arby's plan to go in, in this location, I was like, all right, one o'clock, two o'clock in the morning, there could be cars that are driving around right in my backyard, headlights that could potentially come through, um, to our side of the road, and I no longer felt like I had my Porsche. I felt like I had my lemon that I just purchased into. Um, so I, I, that, that was something that I just thought was important to bring about to you as a homeowner that's living there and is gonna have to deal with this process, um, going forward, and I'm not sure, as I said, where all of you live, but just think about your families, maybe that baby that you just had, um, that might also have to deal with this, uh, process that you weren't sold into. Um, and I guess my, my questions for you guys before making any district, any, um, decisions would be to think about some of this stuff. Uh, can you, like, think about being able to explain the benefits of what rezoning does and why this should happen? Um, and then the other thing that I would love to find out is, like, what is the plan for the Brayden Parkway? Um, and is there a, a, a timing for when this rezoning project might happen? Um, if rezoning request is approved, can you explain, not only, like, obviously, the Brayden Parkway, I'd love to find out what would happen there, but like, what would happen, like, what would be the timeline for the actually Arby's to go into this location? And then, the other thing that I'd love for you guys to think about, and I don't know if you, where all of you live again, but obviously, there is a, a huge traffic issue that exists on Route one-sixty. Um, and I feel like some of that has been addressed, um, like, in the news and in different locations, and then probably in front of you guys in the past. Um, I don't know if anyone here has tried to get on the highway between the hours of seven-thirty in the morning and nine-thirty AM, but if you were to go from basically where the Brayden Parkway Expressway is located and where this proposed location's gonna be, it could take you literally twenty minutes to travel one mile. Um, and that same situation will also happen at twelve-thirty at noon coming the other direction when, if you were getting off of Route seventy-seven onto one-sixty. Uh, and then the same thing, imagine trying to get off after work at four-thirty or five, four-thirty in the evening. Might take you twenty-five minutes to travel that one mile. Um, I know there's already a lot of congestion that has built there, and I could see a, a fast-food development, like, an Arby's being a location where a lot of cars could go to, sit to, um, and it could just create a lot of undue noise that would be right on top of all of our homes. So, I mean, those are some of my concerns. I had some other things, but I know that there are others here that had plenty to, to share. So, I don't know, like, if I ever wanted to get answers to those questions, how do we go about getting those answers?
You can just contact the planning department directly or bill you.
Okay. And then, um, what was my other one? Well, I'll come, I might have something else, but there were a few other things that I had come up.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Uh, anybody else opposed? Yes, sir.
Anthony Becker, nine-five-four Emery Lane, Fort Mill. Good evening, council members. Thank you for your time tonight. Uh, I'll be behalf, I'll be brief, um, on behalf of my household and the proposed, proposed amendment change to the retail office site. Uh, I strongly object to this amendment based on the following reasons. One, allowing BD three permitted uses on this site will open the door for uses that belong on a large-scale commercial site as described by York County Code and not at the entrance of residential plan community. Two, we understand that a potential use would be a drive-through restaurant. Drive-through restaurants produce an increased amount of traffic in and out of the entrance to a residential neighborhood. There's only one access point for this five-point-seven acre site, and it is located on Brayden Parkway, not on Highway one-sixty. Number three, in addition to drive-throughs, typical BD three uses allow for hours of operation that are beyond what would be acceptable for residential neighborhood. And number four, adding a drive-through or other high-intensity uses to this corner would be a detriment to the home values in Brayden. I know that I personally would not have been interested looking at buying in this neighborhood, uh, if it currently existed, and being that close to everyone's homes. Um, I would like to ask the council to consider rejecting their request as a, as this application moves forward in the process. I would also like to request that anyone in the audience who agrees with me in this request of not amending the Brayden PD, please stand up in support.
Mr. Chairman, can we make sure that the record reflects how many folks stand?
Sure. Karen, can you start counting? But that was well done. I appreciate the...
Thank you. Thank you for your time and consideration.
That's the way you do it.
All right. Appreciate it.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Well, I have to say, we only have, what, forty chairs? So, uh, forty-five chairs? So, I'd say a good sixty?
Kevin's the numbers guy. We should let him know.
Count to thirty.
Uh, anybody else? Yes, sir.
Over the plane, speak, but it's, there's one in general was speaking. Richard Riley, two-two-eight Hilton Lane. Uh, we're currently across the street. We're gonna have the big Earth Fair over there. There's a lot of development. Just wanted to piggyback on what he was saying. We need to really consider the traffic flow of all the things that are currently in place versus looking at this one part as just being a separate entity. There's gonna be a lot of development across the street, a lot of traffic going on, and the type of business that will be in that new unit will be highly important. You don't want, I, my personal belief, you wouldn't want something that really adds even more congestion to that one light. I think they're gonna have them also exit out into the Brayden, uh, entry point there to get on the road, so I'm assuming they're gonna have to make a U-turn to come around and go out. So, depending on the traffic, traffic flow through these businesses reporting in, might really have a, a big traffic issue there, too. But your thoughtful, going forward, what thoughtfully you would do for it would be very important to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Amy Totten, and I live at four-four-one Galberth Court. Good evening, and thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak.
Absolutely.
Um, I would like to echo my support for the reasonings that have already been provided by my neighbors tonight. Um, my family was initially attracted to York County by the design of the neighborhood when we moved here from another state. Our development has very high aesthetic standards. Even putting a trash can, which in my household is a lot of baby diapers, um, outside of our steaming hot garages this summer, takes a, a very, very large effort to be approved by Lennar's control of the HOA, and this is what our community has grown to expect. Any development within the Brayden Plan Development should meet that aesthetic rules, the color schemes that are required, and have some low-profile signage requirements to meet the aesthetics of the residential community that this space is gonna be a part of. A late-night establishment would not be conducive to the planned development around the retail space. You can see our community pool and the playground that my daughter plays at from the land that's gonna be developed. There are always people running or walking their dogs along the Brayden Parkway. This is a highly walkable space. With increase in vehicle traffic that's not from that residential area, what we love about living in York County goes away. And according to the county's code, all major changes to the planned development must show a change in conditions, changes in the developmental policy of the community, or conditions that were un, un, uh, reasonably unforeseen at the time of approval. None of these have occurred. The building of the development has gone on without a hitch. York County's economy is booming, and projects are going forward everywhere. We don't have to look far to see this with the Earth Fair development across the street. For businesses are moving here at a fast pace, and we should stick to the zoning benefits that the residents around us and not just them. After reviewing the proposed rezoning, I'm concerned that the fast casual restaurant space could also be turned to a drive-through restaurant in addition to this Arby's that's coming in. The Earth Fair development is zoned also to include a fast food, fast-food drive-through. This could potentially be three different drive-throughs in one intersection that may or may not have a stoplight. This is a lot of traffic to also include a residential development and access point. Having a high-vehicle traffic retail space entering and exiting through a residential area starts a bad precedent for York County. Even down the street on Highway one-sixty, there's a Dairy Queen drive-through that we frequent, um, and it enters and exits on one-eighty, or one-sixty. It does not have an access point within the neighborhood that it brushes up against on two different sides. Um, in conclusion, the retail space needs, access needs to be moved to Highway one-sixty, and it should not include high-vehicle traffic retail establishments. Please vote no on the proposed rezoning, and please consider the residents of Brayden and the kids of Brayden in any future discussions. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else opposed? Yes, sir.
My name is Shirshant Sharma. I live at one-four-five-eight Afton Way in Fort Mill. Good evening, council members. Uh, I'm here also to, uh, express my disappointment at, uh, at this proposal, and there are a few things I would like to point out. Number one is, uh, the picture that was painted when I invested and when I bought my property is totally different than what is being proposed here where the land use will be changed. There are certain things that stand out, the first being, there are, there are, uh, similar land uses or zoning uses available in the, near, in the proximity of where this proposed land use or zoning use change is being proposed. There is an Earth Fair development that's going around right across one-sixty from this particular parcel, and that area can be used for similar, uh, businesses. So, it doesn't have to, they don't have to change the land, uh, the zoning use in the proposed parcel that they've, they've proposed. Uh, the other thing is, the, this parcel exists or is located at the entry of, of our community, and if this is to happen going forward, anyone who's coming into our community will have to drive right next to the Arby's restaurant or whatever comes there, which will be, uh, which won't be, uh, you know, as conducive to the overall aesthetics, uh, and the appeal that our community will bring about. Uh, some people also mentioned that how close this particular parcel is to the community playground and the pool and all that, which, which again is a concern for me. And then, in addition to that, traffic is also a concern where the Brayden Parkway itself is not a big route, a big road, and I mean, I'm only making assumptions here, but if a delivery truck is to enter that, there is no way the delivery truck will be able to take a U-turn on that Brayden Parkway. And there are options, or there, there could be scenarios where some of the traffic getting out of these, uh, retails, uh, might end up cutting across Brayden community itself to get onto one-sixty, which through another route. So, there are traffic concerns, there are potential safety concerns, there are aesthetic concerns, and so I, I, I propose, I strongly, uh, uh, I don't agree with, with this zoning change, and I would like you all to consider it the same way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, anybody else opposed? Uh, anybody, oh, sorry.
Hi, my name is Gabriella Beldisari. I live at fifteen-sixty-five Afton Way. Um, excuse me. Um, I wasn't prepared to speak because everything I've heard so far, I agree with, and I would also, um, ask that you consider blocking and, um, um, negatively, but, um, on hearing, um, Amy, is it? Amy's comment about the wastebasket. I'm a new resident in, uh, on Afton Way in, in Brayden, and we were not even in our house for like two weeks, and we got a picture of us leaving our wastebasket on our driveway. Um, it was a really nice welcome letter from the home management company, and, um, I hadn't even finished reading the whole big manual that they gave us, so I wasn't aware. But one of the things that sticks out in my mind in their letter here is, um, saying that we're subject to governing documents that were, um, established for rules and regulations concerning the external property of your home and, external appearance of your home and property. And this sentence, um, sticks out in my mind, and I wanted to read to you. These covenants are written for the protection of the community as a whole and to help maintain your property's value. So, personally, I think that in Arby's or any other kind of business, establishment of that nature, will reduce my property value much more than my wastebasket on my driveway. And that's my piece that I wanted to say. And I agree also with safety, traffic, and, um, every other concern. Thank you very much for your attention.
Let me speak for the HBA. They apologize for sending that letter. Anybody else against? Anybody wanna speak in favor? Yes, sir.
Thank you. I feel like I'm on a bit of an island tonight.
Break me in.
My name's Sean Tulley, three-seven-eight Eli's Way in Fort Mill. Um, I, too, am a neighbor of this area. I live across the street in Baxter Village, and I was the author of the original rezoning in two thousand thirteen. So, I've been a part of the Brayden early vision and going through the amendments that came back through, in two thousand sixteen, and then I'm here again to clarify certain things and provide clarity, uh, and I guess sharpen our pencils on uses. If you wanna go to the first slide... Okay. Thank you. So, this is the... first slide... Okay, thank you. So, this is the original 2013 PD zoning, back when Standard Pacific was envisioning this entire project. If you look at the plan, the entire frontage was envisioned as, envisioned as possible retail or single-family residential. Again, this was just a study, and we kinda went through the process of understanding what's a good balance and what's a good edge condition along the 160, uh, streetscape. What came before you, uh, originally in 2013, we actually eliminated a lot of the retail frontage and backed up homes that were alley-fed, uh, along that edge and created a buffer. Multifamily was created and provided across the Brayden Parkway, and then, uh, the five, five to six-acre parcel was envisioned to be neighborhood service-scale retail. So, when we came in for the zoning, this is the original approved zoning, it was blocked out as retail slash office or multifamily residential. They wanted to keep the uses open for future development because the sequence of how retail comes in, they wanna have the rooftops first, and then they wanna come in and, and figure out what's valuable or what's appropriate for this area. So, this slide represents what was approved in 2013. So, the re, the retail frontage was there. There's a 20-foot buffer and a 30-foot setback along that edge. In 2016, we came back for an amendment, um, due to, uh, I guess a designation for how the neighborhood is, um, shown, and the purpose of that zoning was actually to create more trees within the neighborhood. We incorporated street trees and lot requirements, and what kind of trees and how many trees would be provided per lot. So, we actually wanted to increase the tree coverage in order to fulfill some of the aesthetic that was in the neighborhood. So, that was to change, I'll go to this, the classification of the site as traditionally cleared versus wooded. And as again, the result of that was the addition of street trees within Brayden, because at that time, the county wasn't as in favor of having street trees, uh, within the planning strip, and then we had specific lot criteria. So, here we are now, and what was originally envisioned in 2013 was simply labeled retail office. And so, what we've learned out, learned through the process now is that that doesn't have latted teeth in terms of how that jives with the York County ordinance. So, retail slash office is not something that's supported in today's county and the ordinance. So, what we're trying to do is provide clarity on that and provide uses that line up with the ordinance. That would be the BD3. That does provide the neighborhood scale, retail, and office for the site. Um, I heard a lot of concerns that I share. Again, I'm a neighbor down here. I run by this property every single day, and I am sensitive to the earth fair, and I experienced that as well. Um, we have sent along, uh, an addendum to the original traffic memo that was submitted in 2013 as part of the PD amendment, or the original PD plan. And so, the traffic numbers actually go down from what was originally in 2013 because we're contemplating 20,000 square feet of retail slash office now as compared to the 30,000 that was there before. So, the county has that traffic memo now, that's done by Campco now, um, in their possession. We've, we focused on exclusions, and I think we're trying to keep a wide enough range to support the original vision and also protect the value of, of this as a development parcel. Um, but we are very sensitive and to the neighbors' concerns. I absolutely get it. I think that this reminds me a lot of the conversation that the Baxter residents had when QT came in on the corner of Sutton Road, that everyone was very concerned, and rightfully so, about what that's gonna look like. And I think that that process showed a pretty good path of how the developer can work with the community to figure out what are the aesthetic concerns, how can we work together to get something that's gonna work for everybody. Likewise, what's the, you know, in terms of the drive-through use, how can we make it so that it serves both interests and that it, the drive-through, the drive-through piece of it is hidden a little bit. Um, so, we, we're very sensitive to the edge condition. We are very sensitive to the fact that this is the entry to the neighborhood. But again, this was always the plan. This was always the idea. This is not a change of use. This is simply a clarifying, uh, exercise that we need to come back through the process.
Yeah, we're doing so well.
Um, Alex, do you wanna say something?
You can, you can go out in the hallway and answer any questions.
Yeah, and, and we will stay behind and talk to people and open up dialogue, so we're, we're around and will be available.
Thank you, sir. Uh, anybody else wanna speak? Yes, sir?
Uh, good evening, council. My name is Alex Kelly, 2808 Chelsea Drive, Charlotte, North Carolina. Uh, we are the petitioner. Uh, we are under contract on the six acres from Lennar. Uh, so Lennar owns all of the, the balance of the property outside of the, uh, outside of the lots that have been developed and, and, uh, sold to the, a lot of the homeowners that are here right now. Um, first off, what I would say is that we view this as a, a creative and hopefully a constructive process. Our goal would be to have one, two, three neighborhood meetings to allow everybody to attend, to see what we're planning, uh, to give us feedback, to see if there's something that actually they see as a benefit to what the, let's call it the buy-right condition might be right now. Uh, the buy-right condition under the current plan is up for, uh, for 30,000 square feet is allowable. As Sean mentioned, we can, we're planning to do between 18,000 and 20,000 square feet. Our traffic is actually lower than what the original TIA had projected. Um, and then, associated with the, uh, traffic signal, we could talk through that with, with you all whenever you would like. Um, but I think our goal is to really, uh, cull out all, all of the items, all the uses that might be a problem for the community, uh, that they see as, um, noxious uses, things that might be a problem for their, uh, home values, and also work on the aesthetic in a way that they find it something that's welcoming, that has a softer edge condition. Um, and we're actually, uh, working on elevations right now that I'd welcome to share with all of y'all, uh, to really collect everybody's feedback. So, again, we, we look at this as sort of the first step in a process where hopefully we can, uh, find some middle ground with everyone. Um, and really more of an information session where we can provide, uh, hopefully with York County's Planning Department, uh, what the current entitlement actually allows for, and what we are willing to give up, uh, with the property in order to hopefully achieve something that they find as a benefit. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else wanna speak in fa, fa?
Sorry, question.
Yeah, I've been wondering there for a minute.
[laughing]
Uh, in favor. Uh, that being said...
Move to close.
Gotta have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Uh, next item. Counsel to hold a public hearing and consider adoption of a resolution of the York County Council approving the issuance by the Illinois Finance Authority of its revenue bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $178 million, a portion in the amount not to exceed $18 million, which will be used to finance and or reimburse the cost of the acquisition, construction, equipment, equipping, and improvement of the assisted living and related facilities, including land located in York County and to be owned by the Memory Care Foundation and other minors related thereto. Anybody here wanna speak in, against? Anybody in favor? Yes, sir?
Uh, Mickey Whiteman, uh, 5947 Melshire, Dallas, Texas.
Long way, long way from home.
Yes. Uh, I'm with the LaSalle Group, the, uh, the owner of the property, Autumn Leaves of Fort Mill, 1061 Gold Hill Road, Fort Mill, uh, South Carolina. Um, the LaSalle Group has been a owner, operator, developer of Memory Care for over 20 years, and we have just recently, uh, started a, a transaction of 10 of our properties, uh, one being the Fort Mill, South Carolina property, uh, to a nonprofit organization, the Memory Care Foundation, which, uh, we are a friendly partner with. It will, uh, the property will not change anything. The, the operator will still be the, uh, the same. Uh, we will be, TLG Family Management is a subsidiary of the LaSalle Group, and they will still be the operator. Uh, there, there will still be jobs in York County. There will still be, uh, services for the community. Anybody with, uh, Alzheimer's and dementia will have a place at Autumn Leaves, and I would just like to say, at the advice of my counsel, we have elected to form a drop-down LLC, uh, titled The Memory TMCF1. It's a Texas for-profit, which is wholly-owned subsidiary of the Memory Care Foundation, and this is for liability purposes. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Um, anybody else wanna speak in favor? Do we have a...
Move to close.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Do we have a new motion?
Move to adopt a resolution.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Next item is new business. Uh, consider approval of nominated applicants for service reports and commissions from the Finance and Operations Committee meeting on June 18th, along with the nominations from the floor. Greg Simmons, Planning Commission at Large.
I would move that we nominate, um, Mark Kendery.
Okay. Everybody get that?
Martin. I move that we nominate Jack Kimball.
Okay, we got three on the floor. Anybody else? Okay, discussion. Somebody.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make the motion that we approve, Mark Kendery.
Hang, hang, hang on.
No, I was just...
Mark Kendery.
Greg Simmons was from the Planning Commission.
Jack Kimball.
Jack Kimball.
And then Jack Kimball and hers. Okay, so we got three on the floor. Discussion. Uh, Mr. Williams.
Uh, I just reiterate, I think I started this the first time when I...
What was nominations?
When I nominated him, I just, uh, when I looked over the applicants, I think all the applicants are, are good, and a lot of them are, are equal. Just, uh, Judge Kimball just was, I think is uniquely, uniquely qualified for what we, for the needs we have on our board. Um, it's not against, uh, Mr. Simmons or any other nominee. In fact, I'm not real sure how the, you know, what, why Mr. Simmons rose above the rest of them for the committee. I'll have to defer to that, to them on that, but I just, um, the Lake Wiley was presenting, uh, the Lake Wiley Commission talked about stuff, and hopefully y'all realized that they have a bunch of expertise that we don't need to have because we got folks over there doing that, and that's what the, the Planning Commission and other boards do, too. I've had, uh, a comment about something later on our agenda from, from the boards, but that, nothing against the, uh, Mr. Simmons or any other nominee. I just feel that, that we have a unique opportunity to put, uh, Judge Kimball on there, and I think he would add a balance to the planning commission that we need.
Anybody else? Any other discussion? No, yes, Mr. Winkler.
I'll just say, as I did when we had the discussion last time, we had a lot of good, qualified candidates come before Finance and Operations. Um, I wish we had more opportunities to have a lot of good, qualified candidates come before us. Um, but I have heard no reasons, um, presented since that Finance and Operations Committee meeting to change my vote from the original vote. No, nothing that changed my mind originally.
Uh, any other discussion? No other discussion?
I think it's time to make a motion. I'm...
Well, that's what I was gonna clarify with Emily. So, this is kind of a first for council, but I'm assuming I just bring forth the name at a, one at a time. We have a vote for, for wins. Am I...
That, that's correct. You had the nominations set. The nominations will serve as your votes.
Right, that's, so I can just bring forth each name and go down the list. Okay, the first name that was nominated is, uh, Greg Simmons. All those in favor of Mr. Simmons? Raise, raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay, so I count three. Okay, the next person was, um...
Mark Kendery.
Okay, that's right. He was second. Okay, Mark, uh, Kendery. All those in favor of...
Oh, since my motion...
You just like voting a lot.
Since the first vote went down, I'll go with this, okay.
Okay, so that...
It only voted once. It didn't go down.
Well, I mean, you can, you can vote again.
There were three voted for it. Nobody voted.
If it, if it fails, you can vote again for another person.
We got three, there's three people, so you can only vote once, the first time.
Well, hell.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, so you need to, you need to vote for one person.
Okay, so you can't...
And then, if you don't have the majority...
Okay, okay. Say that last part.
Then if, if you don't have the majority, you can vote, have kind of runoff. That makes sense.
Okay, fair enough. So, we're still on Mark. So, we, I see, I think I saw, okay, I saw two.
Well, just one, 'cause I can't...
You can't vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right, yeah. Thanks for keeping me straight.
I see what went down, so it's...
This is so confusing. Okay, uh, the next one is Jack Kimball. Uh, all those in favor of Jack Kimball. Okay, so we got three, two, three, one, and three. So, we got a runoff between those two. Am I good? Okay, so, back to the two main people would be, um, all those in favor of Greg Simmons. Three. All those in favor of Jack Kimball. Raise your hand. That's four. Looks like he gets it. Am I good, Emily?
Yeah.
Thank you. You're so good at this. I mean, two things in a row. That just spurred them on the first time. Um, next item. Counsel discussion and consider approval of applicants for service for boards and commissions from the Finance and Operations Committee meeting on August 20th, 2018, along with nominations from the floor. Sonia Burris, Old English District.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Under discussion, we, I'll explain why this is before the full council. Finance Operations met, when we met, we discussed the potential conflict of having, um, Ms. Burris serve on the Old English District Board, since she is an employee of the Rockhill CVB, and the, and they, their, the money that is distributed due to that. And we felt that the full council should weigh in on whether they believed it was a conflict, and if you don't believe it's a conflict, then certainly Ms. Burris is qualified. It wasn't a question of qualifications. It was certainly, the only question was whether or not full council believed there was a conflict of interest.
What did the committee think?
We thought that full council should decide.
So, the committee didn't form an opinion?
We didn't. We didn't, we didn't do anything more than say, hey, we, we think it's close enough that it oughta go up to everybody.
Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
I was gonna, um, what's, how would you describe a potential conflict by her serving?
I'll describe that for you.
Okay.
Okay. So, um, one of the questions that we had in the Finance and Operations Committee to Michael Kendry was, you know, what would happen if something came to, to vote, because the Convention and Visitors Bureau actually does the marketing, a lot of marketing for the Old English District.
No.
Can you say that again? I'm sorry, I missed that.
Um, I'm not quite sure what I said. So, so, so there's a relationship between the CVB and the Old English District, and that is one of, I mean, they, do they not market, I'm just gonna, do they not market for the Old English District?
Ma'am, we promote tourism for seven counties, including York County. We work cooperatively on enough of our projects, but they do not market for us.
Okay. I think they, they do post things, events and things that you have going on. They're not spending any money to market for you.
Well, we, we don't actually put on events ourselves. We serve in a similar, um, capacity, except we have seven counties.
Jane, you introduce yourself.
I'm sorry. I'm Jane Scarborough with the Old English Tourism District.
Yeah, why don't you just come up to the podium in case you have any other. We don't normally do this, but this is kinda...
So, does the old, so is it, is it the other way around? Do you market for the CVB?
Well, we work cooperatively. We are almost like a field office for the State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Tourism. We were created by state law, um, 35 years ago.
So, so the relationship, um, it's not, it's not really a matter of having to, someone having to recuse themselves. It's more of a conflict because of the, the relationship, and if, what you do in conjunction with the CVB should be totally impartial. And, and I can give you an example of, of some, some other groups that feel like that might not be impartial. I think it is, um, the, this relationship is compounded, um, because you are actually on the H-Tax Committee who decides and, and is very involved in the funding of the CVB. So, I just, in my personal opinion, it is a, somewhat of a conflict, um, and not, I mean, I just wouldn't want there to be any question as to decisions. And an example that I would, um, give of the...
She does recuse herself from all those votes. Just to be clear on that.
And...
Yeah, I, I, I know.
And we have not voted on any CVB funding as part of York County hospitality tax.
Folks on this marking allocation for the...
Yeah, so, so, but, but what I, I guess that, that still, their relationships form, and then you are, you're basically... and then you are, you're basically working on the same, the same thing, the same decision. So I have another page here that I wanted to show, it's the same thing. And it's nothing, it's not personal at all. It's, in my opinion, it's all business.
And while Allison's looking, do you have a legal opinion about this concern? Sorry, it's got to be in threes.
I, I don't know what Michael's opinion has shared. I really don't know that much about how the Old English District is organized, but I, you know, I would say there are potential conflicts, but typically it would be on a case-by-case basis, depending on how expenditures are going to be approved.
Wait.
I'll say this, Mr. Kendry, at our committee meeting, somewhat echoed those comments and said that it would be the obligation of the board or commission member to recuse themselves if there was a conflict, but that there was not an inherent conflict that would automatically disqualify you, but you would not be able to vote on things that would, you know, she would not be able to vote on anything that impacted the C V B.
Allison, I'll go ahead and then I'll get the bump. Mr. Roddy.
Well, just, you know, from the looks, and you can't deny how things look sometimes, but in all of the grant applications for the C V B, the Old English District, and I know it's, this is why I'm just giving the example of relationships and how relationships can affect things like this, but the Old English District was given ninety-six percent of what they asked for, which is much higher than any of the other applicants were given. So it just, I, I still think it's a conflict somewhat for you to be on that, on that committee, and I think we are just compounding that by any connection to the C V B. I think things should be kept very clear-cut.
Mr. Roddy.
So are we talking about you being on the committee or Sanja being on the committee?
I thought we were talking about Sanja being on the...
We are.
Old English District Board, but, but then Ms. Love had some considerations about...
Well, she's over the...
Okay, now, my question, would you see it being a conflict with someone from the C V B being on this commission?
No, sir. We have had someone from the C V B in the past serve a couple of terms on our board, and we have a twenty-one-member board, and three are appointed from each county. One is appointed by County Council, one is appointed by either the Chamber Economic Development, and one is appointed by the Legislative Delegation.
Okay, because I could hardly fathom one person would have that much influence to swing any, any kind of vote out of twenty-one. That's, twenty-one seems to be a large number, and my, my next question would be, you know, if it's noted, regardless of whether it was Sanja or anyone else serving in any capacity on any board, and if something came up, whether it was on County Council or Planning Commission or Old English District, if anyone had any type of conflict, there's always that option that they recognize there's a conflict and not vote and recuse themselves, like we've had on this council. I'm sure we've had other incidents with other board members serving in a volunteer capacity. That's always an option for anyone, not just whether they work for the C V B or, or any other item that comes up. So as long as there's an option for, I mean, that option's available to anyone, so I don't think, just because they work for a certain place, and I'm sure everyone is reminded of, if something came up directly with a line of work that they're doing on a day-to-day basis, if that ever came before the Old English District, I'm sure, they would recuse themselves just as well as she would, as well as I would up here, or, or any other member serving. So I don't, I don't think, just because of that, and you said, we've had people in the past who served, and I haven't heard of any instances where that's been an issue, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't have any hesitation on supporting her serving in that capacity.
Anybody else? Yes, sir, Mr. Winkler?
I'll say, I guess, one, I think the H-Tax Board and all, when we talk about the funding for that, does, they came up with a really good application that they score these now based on the accuracy of the numbers and the information that's given and stuff, and so, you know, I, I think that's honestly a better application. You get a higher percentage, and I think that's part of why the application was recommended from the H-Tax Board that way. I do see that there is the potential for conflicts, but I think, I know Ms. Burris well enough to know that, and I would expect that she would, you know, when something comes up that directly affects the organization she's employed with or her, that she would recuse herself from the vote as the previous authorities have done. So I, you know, if we start saying just that there's any potential for a conflict or in the future that you can't be on a board, we might not have a lot of people serving on boards anymore, just because everybody knows people and, and, you know, big families and that type of thing, so in this case, because the, two of the county's attorneys now have said that they don't see the direct conflict inherent in it, but there is the potential, and they would need to recuse themselves at that point, I would support Sanja.
Were there no other applicants?
Yes, Ms. Cox.
So there were no other applicants for this board?
No.
Was there enough time for other folks to apply? So this isn't office's, is this office's slot? I guess not.
I was just going to offer comments very similar to what Mr. Winkler just said, so I will do that.
So who wants to approve the nominated person? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no?
No. Sorry, there was no motion.
Well, it's a nomin...
Move to approve the nominations from, from the Finance Committee.
We didn't, we never passed her out. We brought it literally.
Move to approve the only one on here. It says approval of applicants for the boards and commissions. So, yeah, move to approve Sanja Burris for the, to serve on the Old English Board.
Versus the, just for future.
Was it, was it, was there, there was a nomination?
We voted to send it to full council without a nomination.
So there was no nomination?
There was no nomination. It went straight to full council.
So technically there just needs to be a nomination.
Okay, well, this says approval of applicant. So I nominate Sanja Burris for the Old English Board.
I'm much more comfortable with that. Thank you, sir.
Are you going to take it again?
No, I was seconding it. It needs one.
I don't think we need a second.
Yeah, you need a second.
Do, do we?
Well, we didn't last time, but anyway.
For a nomination, you don't technically need to...
Why, I draw my second. That's not needed.
Anyway, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no?
No.
Next item, council to approve the Finance and Operations Committee's recommendation for hospitality tax financial year 2018 marketing grant funding as follows. Ag and art tour, five thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Art council, forty-four thousand three hundred and ninety dollars. Christmas bill, zero. Cultural and Heritage Commission, forty-five thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Old English District, twenty-four thousand dollars. Lake Wiley's Visitor Center, zero. York County Fashion Week, nine thousand three hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Lake Wiley Home and Garden Tour, three thousand four hundred and sixty-one dollars, contingent upon the county attorney's approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
Just want to make sure, the first round, we got disqualified the Lake Wiley's Home and Garden Tour. I just want to make sure that that had been, that had been, that had been taken care of.
Bill?
You say we disqualified?
I'm sorry.
Am I reading the wrong one? One of them, no. The Lake, the, oh, bad Kevin show. The, the first one we had, the Lake Wiley's Home and Garden Tour, was disqualified. Has that been taken care of?
Yes, sir, that has been, that last sentence, and actually, just discussing the gene mean, I guess we pick the change in, and I continued to find, kind of, my words, as far as that, we just felt as far as that.
But they fixed the budget?
Yes.
Where it doesn't include it at all?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, council to consider first reading of an ordinance to authorize the refund of the county government portion of overpaid taxes for the legal residents identified as Tax Map Number 7200301066, and to provide for other matters relating there too.
Do we need a motion?
Did our, yeah, did our tax guy?
The assessor is out on vacation, so we've got to make some plans.
Ouch.
Edgar is going to make a few brief statements.
Okay.
In a nutshell, let me know, I'll make a still some stand here. The assessor can't go back for the two years, which y'all did in the past, the previous lady that had this issue. We all grew in addition to two years beyond that, and I think that's what you're asking for tonight. The assessor can't do anything about that legally, can't make a change. You're basically just allowed to give this gentleman what amounts to basically a few hundred dollars, I think. If I understand you're wrong on that.
Yeah.
It's not very much money at all. You're going to be consistent, which you did last time.
Yes, sir.
Edgar Harden, Deputy Assessor, I'll just make a few brief points. So we first became aware of the issue in February 2018 for Mr. Glenn. We immediately corrected that, processed his application, refunded him the two years that's allowed under law. Situation's very unfortunate, although the county appears to have made no error. He must make application to receive the discount. He made application in 2018, and we refunded the two years that were allowed to do. So it's our recommendation to management and council that no further refunds should be issued. This could set a, an unwounded precedent for something that the county, in this case, appeared to be in, not in error. So that's all I have to say.
Let me get a clarification, and Kevin, you might have to help my memory, but I understand that he received some kind of notification two or three times and did not...
There was a notification mailed back in, I guess, 2007, 2006 timeframe. Yes. Which is standard practice, the assessor's office sent a notification out. So he was notified, as standard practice.
So we know he got the notification.
Well, we, we can't attest to the post office delivering his mailbox. I can't attest.
Okay. Yes, sir, Mr. Roddy.
Well, I don't think, no, no offense to you, I don't think you told us anything that we didn't already know. No one's ever said that the county's done anything wrong. I think even with the last situation that we had...
That's correct. True.
It's basically framed as an oversight on the, on the homeowner, and I wanted to ask you a question as far as your presentation here today was, and I know, and I know you're speaking for, for Rick. Were, are you passing those words along from Rick, or those were just pretty much what you had to say?
Yes, those are, those are, I discussed this before he left, and those are, those are his, his words and his opinions, as well as the office in general. I'm the Deputy Assessor, so I stand by those opinions as well.
Ms. Cox.
I just wanted to ask a question about process, because I've learned today that essentially this matter came up before our Tax Appeal Board, and I want to know how it got there and what was actually presented to them. Did he appeal his two years? Can you explain that to me?
Sure, yeah. He actually applied for refunds back to 2008. We're allowed to go back two years, which we did, so he was appealing the denial of refunds from 2008 through 2015. He was refunded sixteen and seventeen.
It just seems odd to me that we have a process that allows him to, because to me, it puts us sideways, and I, if there's one thing that happens, no matter what the vote is, I mean, if, if the council agrees that, that this gentleman should receive anything more, I think it needs to be made very clear to our Tax Appeal Board that we appreciate the job that they do, that in this particular instance, they did all that they could do, and they had no authority to do anything beyond that, and I, for, for whatever reason, it just doesn't seem like it, it should even go before them, because there's some sentiment that, well, what are you, what, what are you doing? You're asking us to serve on a committee, and then you're undoing what we're doing. That's not what happened here, and I would hope that it makes its way back...
Yeah.
To that committee, that they understand that council is not undoing or questioning that.
And that was a decision I think he made to go to that committee. Again, I think what y'all are asking for tonight is just those additional two years that y'all did last time.
Right.
And, you know, while his management is going to be against that because it doesn't follow the normal practice, this is several hundred dollars, and I would say if, if the majority of y'all are going to vote as y'all did last time, and I think Mr. Roddy has talked about this as well, it would, I don't know if it's possible at this point, but to make this ordinance cover everything, if we're going to set a precedent where everybody's going to get an extra two years in York County, it's not going to break us. I don't agree with it, but we tend to go through a lot of...
Unnecessary.
If that's what the majority's going to do, I would just assume we always did it, rather than go through this every time.
I think Mr. Kendry said we couldn't do that, though.
We do, I think we have an option to, my, my, and I want to make another quick comment, Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I think we need to clear up the steps that anybody would have to take, because sending them to the Assessment of Board of Appeals is not the right step, so we need to make sure that doesn't happen, because it's a waste of the citizens' time, and it, and like Kristi said, we don't want that board feeling like we're doing something above and beyond, but they should have never, they should have never heard that case anyway, because they don't have the authority to grant anything above the two years.
May I, may I clarify?
Okay.
Whether or not something goes to the Board of Assessment of Appeals is determined by state statute. So this is sort of a weird anomaly in state statutes, where this process, once the assessor's office makes the determination and denies it, taxpayer has the right to appeal to the Board of Assessment of Appeals about whether or not the assessor's office properly followed the process, and then there is also this sort of strange authority given to council to have an ordinance that would refund additional years. So they're sort, they're sort of two separate issues, but they're both there in the state statute, and the county doesn't have the right to tell the taxpayer, you, you can't appeal to the Board of Assessment of Appeals.
What happened was the assessor's office gave him two years, and then he appealed that.
Yes.
Right, yes, whether or not.
Issued their response, and he has the opportunity as the property owner to appeal that before the board. That's part of the statute.
I think one problem we had, too, the previous assessor was so proactive in bringing it before council and saying he was for the refund, that kind of perplexed us a little bit, and put us in a difficult position.
And we can, we can tell them, yes, you're going to get the two years, and we can tell them, you know what, no, you're not. We didn't do a thing wrong, and you're not going to get it, but they have the right to bring it to you guys.
And before I go to Mr. Williams, what did you say about Mr. Kendry?
I believe he told us last time...
You'd have to do it on...
We have to do it on a case-by-case basis. We can't change a policy. State law says you can't do that.
Okay, Mr. Williams.
Yeah, just for the point of clarification, you said that your staff recommends no further refund. That's, that's this, you're talking about this and any refund, not, no further than the two years we've already...
Yes, sir, yeah, we've given them.
I thought I heard you say that, but I didn't think it was quite, quite clear enough, so I appreciate that.
Yep, yep, no further.
Mr. Johnson.
Do you know, any, well, I may have one question, and you, and you're probably not going to know it, so don't feel bad. Do you know how many people have applied for the four percent tax rate and pay the four percent tax rate in York County?
It's approximately sixty percent of the tax base.
So six percent of the tax, but you don't know how many of residential homes that...
It's roughly sixty-five thousand, four percent, and of course, that number, number changes on a daily basis as properties are bought and sold.
All right, thank you. What, what that shows is that sixty-five thousand people got a mail, piece of mail, filled out a piece of mail, and submitted it, and they, and they got their, and because of that, they got their taxes. I disagreed with this a year ago when we gave back money and we set a bad precedent. That's the beauty of precedents, they, they can be changed if they are bad, if you do the wrong, if, if you don't do the right thing. I, I think this is wrong. I thought it was wrong then. I'm going to continue, I'm going to vote no today on giving an extra refund, and, and quite honestly, we are arbitrarily picking two years. Why not give him three? Why not give him four, five, or six? I mean, at what point do you, you just arbitrarily decide you've drawn a line? And this is an arbitrary giving back of money. And this is an arbitrary giving back of money. This is, every person who took the time to fill out a form and get a 4% tax rate is now going to pay to reimburse this man because he didn't take that time. Because this money's coming out of general fund.
Mr. Roddy.
That is exactly, I'm not done talking yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Keep trying to override me.
I said a word.
That is a, that is general fund money. This is not coming out of some pot we put aside to hold aside for people who don't bother to fill out their forms correctly. This is general fund money. And we're not giving him back a dime of the Fort Mill School District money, which is, by the way, the chunk of his cash here. And I, and I will be, I'll be surprised if he ever gets that money out of them. All, we don't have the authority to give him that money. All we can do is give him the county's portion. I guess that's a bad precedent, continues to set a bad precedent, and I would ask that we vote no today.
Mr. Roddy.
Well, a few points of clarification. First of all, just because 65,000 homeowners pay 4%, doesn't, doesn't mean they received the letter. Some people did it at closing, some people did it two years later once they caught it. So it doesn't mean they responded to a letter to come in and do it. Second of all, it's not general fund money, it's money he has paid. So let's don't get it twisted because he has paid into an excess of what would have been paid. So it's his money to start with. And the, and the last, the last point or last question that I would, I would like to try to make is sometimes we, we're faced with doing what an ordinance says, and sometimes we're faced with the opportunity to correct something, just as well as you say, we set a bad precedent and we shouldn't do it again. If we've recognized as seven council members that we can do something better to benefit our citizens, to benefit the process, I would like to have that opportunity to make it right. It's not too many times we get that leeway, and the state statute gives us that leeway to go above and beyond the two years. Either take that away from us and say, we're never going to do it, or let's exercise the right to do it when we're given it, because not too many times we have the opportunity to do something and make it right from a taxpayer's standpoint. All too often, we're handcuffed and we're sitting here face many times to say, tell the citizen, I'm sorry, but if we could, we would. Here's a chance for us to say, we can and we will. Not too many times we get that opportunity. I take pride in the fact of being able to fight for a citizen, to, to make it right. We've not given that opportunity many times, and, and sometimes we shut the door and we can stand behind a policy. But now we're saying, we have the opportunity to do something, and we're still not going to do it. Because there's going to come a time, someone comes and asks us for something that an ordinance doesn't allow us to do it, and we're going to say, we can't do it. Our ordinance or our law, our, our practice say we can't do it. So when do we do it? And I just, I just hope and pray that it's never your son or your daughter, and we can't say, just because I knew to fill it out, you should have known to fill it out. In that case, we'll have all doctors sitting up here, we have all lawyers sitting up here, we have all, everybody would know everything about every situation. And, and I'm just saying, it's unfortunate someone would pay into a system over a 10-year period and not know they're paying, overpaying. But this is our opportunity to do what we can. We can't control what the school district does, that's a whole separate plot. But as a board, as a commission, as a council member, I'm saying we should recognize that and do what we can. We can't, we can't do what Fort Mill's going to, we can't be concerned about that. But let's make it right through York County's eyes and tell that taxpayer and that citizen and everybody else out there, if, if we catch something that we can make right, we'll do what we can. We can't pay 10 years overpayment, but by God, we can do something to make it look more bearable for, for the citizens. So at, at this time, I'll make a motion that we approve the additional refund to Mr. Morgan Glenn.
I just want to say something.
Wait a minute, I've got to have a second.
I have a second.
All right, we've got a second. I saw, actually, I heard you first, and I'll beat a chance.
I think the worst precedent that we could set would be to not refund someone their money that they've, that they've paid in. And, you know, I said, I said last time we had this discussion that I think one of the hardest things that this council might do is put ourselves in the shoes of the people who come and sit in this room, and it doesn't matter that this person has, what, what the circumstances are surrounding this person, the fact of the matter is that he has overpaid his taxes. And when you look on the other hand, you know, you've got over here, here's a person who's overpaid, and we don't want to give him his money back. But on this, this hand, we've got somebody who's underpaid, and we're all about going back and getting that. And we'd go all the way back, as many years as, as it would take. So I, I feel like the man is deserving of his money, and I think it is almost embarrassing that York County would expect to keep two years worth, we're talking about a few hundred dollars, okay? We, that we would expect to keep someone's money that was overpaid, and it doesn't really matter what account it's in now, it originally came out of his pocket. I think that if you went to a restaurant and you were overcharged for something, and you went back and you told them that maybe you didn't have what you were charged for, that business would give you your money back. And, and I think that that is the absolute right thing to do. So I will vote to give him his money.
Mr. Williams.
Yeah, they, I guess I just want to reiterate the fact that this, I have nothing against Mr. Glenn, I have nothing against the previous applicant, and it's all, for me, it's all about protecting the other 250,000 taxpayers. The two-year clawback is, is designed for that. I mean, it's basically a no-fault refund, and so it's designed to give them something, but the, but the limitation to two years is to, is to, is to protect all the other taxpayers. And I think that they give us the, the leeway to go back further for extraordinary circumstances. That's not written in there, but that's the way I see it, and Mr. Roddy and I disagreed on that last time. We don't, we need to have that, that discussion again, but I see no extraordinary circumstances. I did get it, I had, I had 21 emails that I hadn't read, that I had to try to read. I got all this afternoon before the meeting happens every meeting day. And one of them was from my commission member on the H-Tax, on the Assessment Board of Assessment Appeals. I had no idea that they, they saw this, but they did notice that this was on the, he said, he sent an email on behalf of the, said he talked to chairman, the chairman pointed out to him it was on new business, and they were concerned that it sets a dangerous precedent. I don't guess they've already realized we, we set precedent before. But I agree with Mr. Johnson, it's, it's easier to do it after one time than it is to do it after repeated times, and, and I think it's important that we, we get it right. I have nothing against this applicant, nothing against the other one. It's just I think the state law is, is not a bad one, and the two years is, is given back for what it was.
Any other comments? This one's hard for me. It's becoming harder and harder because Mr. Williams and Mr. Johnson are saying all the proper, right things. I mean, it's absolutely probably the best way for a governing body to go, as you said, to protect the other 200,000 citizens or whatever the number is. I, my heart's kind of with Mr. Roddy on this, just, you know, that's maybe a flaw in me, but I'm going to be consistent since I said this at the other reading and go ahead and do this, but I think this is probably the last time I'm going to do this, just based on the wisdom of everything being said. But it's now happened twice, and I, I do see a momentum gaining for something like this. So per Mr. Williams' comments about looking out for the others, I'm going to stick to what I said at the other discussion and go ahead and support the money being refunded. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Next item, I don't believe there are any committee reports or any.
We met. We met. Finance met.
Oh, there's, okay. Sorry about that, it's nothing listed here.
Finance met today to have a discussion regarding an increase in the county debt service mileage. The auditor reported to our committee that she has determined that debt service mileage must be increased to 11.4 mils, an increase of 2.0 mils. That does not require any action by the council.
That's it?
That is it.
Any new non-agenda comments from a council member?
I, I have.
Yes, Mr. Johnson?
Forgive me, this is, I don't think this is actually agenda, but it's something we did tonight. We, we've changed our procedures to allow public hearing, and then it goes to the planning commission, then it comes back for us with three votes. I, I received emails just like you all did, and I tried to reply to every one of those emails. This property's in my district specifically, the Brayden one, saying, trying to explain this procedure. While, when you, when, when we voted, you immediately moved on what you're supposed to do. That whole crowd looked up at us like, what did you just do and what's next?
I know.
We have, I, I don't know if it needs to be a staff member who stands up at the very beginning and explains this procedure until people get used to it, because people, when they see us voting yes and no, and they go, what did y'all just do? And they have no idea why we did it or how we did it, and I really think we need, you know, for probably the first year, two years, we really need to explain this to people, make sure they understand what we're doing.
Mr. Johnson, if I may, when they were talking about their, after the vote, I did explain that to their representative that, that spoke, met in the conference room that was being discussed. So in that particular case, we tried to assuage that concern.
I didn't even look up because I realized it.
A lot of people didn't get here tonight because they are in traffic trying to get from Charlotte to York. And so the people who explained it to you in the hallway heard it, but the people who are watching maybe on TV or something don't, don't know. And I just think it's really confusing, too, when they come here, and they really don't even know, they know it's a public hearing, but they really don't even know what, what they're, what they're talking about. It's very confusing. And, you know, we're sitting here listening, and some of us don't even know what, what's, what they're, what they're talking about. So I don't know if there's some way on the, you know, the, the agenda that goes out to the, to the public to have a little bit more information on that. I, I just think that awareness and people understanding things is very important.
Mr. Winkler.
Not about that, we've talked about that enough, but I'll just let council know and the public know. I think most all of you probably got an email a few weeks ago from the White House Council of Intergovernmental Affairs inviting you to South Carolina State and Local Leaders Conference at the White House this week. I did accept that invitation, and just for clarity, because I had the question asked, I paid for my own airfare and hotel, and I am going up this week. I'm flying up tomorrow morning, I got to be at Charlotte Airport. We leave at 7:25, so I'm glad this is hopefully not going to go too much longer since I have to be in Charlotte about 5:30 in the morning. But I am going to fly out for a couple of days and attend that Intergovernmental Affairs Conference for state and local leaders.
That's great. Tell Donald I said, hey.
Send us some selfies.
Mr. Williams.
They, and Robert said we've talked about that public hearing process enough. I did want to say, I think that it, it showed what we were trying to do tonight, a little brief of that, when it started at the front saying we need to get neighborhood meetings and see what we can come up with a project that we all like, as opposed to waiting a third reading, public hearing, and then, and then sitting, deferring it and sending them for a, a week when all, all this stuff's been done. So I think, I mean, because with the emails, you know, I, I had an opinion, just, just like, and, and still do, but, but, but his willingness to work was a little more than, than the email showed, so.
Mr. Williams, Mr. Roddy.
Quick comment on, on the, on the backside. I, I like the new process because it gives us a little more heads up about what's coming, but I do think it kind of leaves the, the citizens kind of like the deer in the headlights because they were kind of looking around like, you know, what happened and what's next, or where do we go from here? I guess to solve that, probably, once we start the public hearing part of it, the very first time it comes, kind of throw out how this process is going to play out, because we do get new people coming from new issues that don't know how the chain of events are going to happen, and this is a new process for us. So maybe if we could kind of give a foresight of, we're here to hear the public hearing, this will go to the planning commission to kind of work out some details. But I think the most important thing I took from tonight was, it puts the citizens and the petitioner in the same room before anything ever gets kicked off, so now that they know they can kind of hash out a couple differences and kind of work with each other before it even gets to the planning commission.
I'd say his work's cut out for him, but you never know. Mr. Shanahan.